Reverend Wesley Hendricks from the Mount Zion Baptist Church, sir, it's a pleasure to have you. And please proceed.
Let us pray. Our God, our help in ages past and our hope for years to come. First and foremost, we come and we thank you for being God and thank you for allowing us to gather in this place to do the work of this town. God, we are so thankful for these town council members who you are giving the insight and the oversight and the wisdom to carry out the business of this great town. And God, we thank you for our leaders of our community, our police officers and our firefighters that serve and protect. And God, as they serve and protect, we're thankful because you protect them as they serve. And now, God, we ask that you would be in the midst of everything that is done in this place. And God, let us hold fast to the adage that was penned in Psalm 133. Behold how good and how pleasant it is for brethren to dwell together in unity. Everything that is done is in your hands and in this place. God, let everything be done decently and in order, and we shall forever glory and magnify you in the name of him that gives us life and saves us all. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance.
To the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Reverend, thank you, sir. It's a good feeling to be able to stand and have prayer before our meetings and then to turn and do the pledge of allegiance. And I thank each of you for participating in that. Okay, council item four, informational items. I read material communications note. Hopefully, you got a chance to go through those. And next, it's my pleasure to introduce Melinda Zimmerman for the oath of office. And who's administering that, is you? Okay, please proceed. Thank you.
I, Melinda Pon Zimmerman,
I, Melinda Pon Zimmerman,
do solemnly swear,
do solemnly swear,
that I will faithfully execute,
that I will faithfully execute,
the office of council one and ward two,
the office of council one and ward two,
for the town of Valdez,
for the town of Valdez,
and will to the best of my ability,
and will to the best of my ability,
support and maintain the Constitution,
support and maintain the Constitution,
of the United States,
of the United States,
and the Constitution,
and the Constitution,
and laws of North Carolina,
and laws of North Carolina,
not inconsistent therewith,
not inconsistent therewith,
to the best of my knowledge and ability,
to the best of my knowledge and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Welcome aboard, ma'am. Ready to go?
I think so.
Okay. If you will bear with us, please, tonight, we're working with a little bit of a new sound system. So if we have problems, we'll stop and try to adjust. Adjust that. I just jinxed it. Adjust that as best we can. Okay, next item on the agenda. Item six is our open forum and public comment. Those of you that are speaking tonight, if you'll speak into the mic, you shouldn't have to move it around. So just be sure to speak into the mic. And council, I'll remind you also that we should speak directly into our mics also. And with that, Councilman Noble will read the guidelines for public speaking.
The open forum and public comments. The council shall provide at least one period for public comment per month during a regular meeting unless no regular meeting is held that month. Any individual or group who wishes to address the council shall inform the clerk any time prior to the start of the meeting and provide their name, address, and subject matter about which they wish to speak. Persons must be present if they wish to address the council. Comments will be limited to five minutes per speaker. Open forum is not intended to require council or staff to answer impromptu questions. Speakers will address all comments to the entire council as a whole and not one individual council member. Discussions between speakers and members of the audience will not be permitted. Speakers will maintain a decorum at all times. Speakers are expected to be courteous and respectful at all times regardless of who occupies the council chairs. These guidelines will help to ensure that a safe and productive meeting is held and that all those wishing to address the council will be afforded that opportunity.
Thank you, sir. First on our list, Beth Hiley.
My name is Beth Hiley. I live at 5291 Minto Springs Mountain Avenue. I am president and founder of Friends of the Valdez Rec. And I'm here to talk about the Love Lady Sidewalk Project. Friends of the Valdez Rec was asked by Town of Valdez staff to be involved in the Love Lady Sidewalk Project. We know what it takes to be committed to a project and see it through as far as its perseverance for lengthy, complicated projects that have big impact on the community. With the time and effort invested by staff and council, plus the benefit that this sidewalk will bring to the town, it will be very disappointing if this previously approved project does not continue moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Rick McClure.
My name is Rick McClure. I live at 408 Giroux Avenue. And basically, Melinda, congratulations. And I hope you do well. One of the things I want to talk about is the sidewalk. And I've looked at several streets around town since I started talking about that sidewalk. And we got from the bridge at the commissary center go all the way on Carolina would go all the way to I-40 back and forth. People walking up and down that road all the time. I drive it all the time. And so I'm kind of like the walkway to nowhere. But there'd be a lot of people at the commissary center could park, walk, and they could walk back and forth. That'd be a pretty good thing there. Personally, I don't think we need to designate $300,000 out of our budget right now. And if they put 1 million, whatever it is, on top of that, and you've got five years to do the project, that means you designate the money until you get it fixed. Now, you will get some of it back as it's done. But I personally think the one from the bridge from the commissary center over to Interstate 40 would probably work good because a lot of people walk in. And the other thing is the, I talked about, I think, month before last, I talked about the pool cover. Trying to get figures on how many people actually use the pool cover in the wintertime. Originally, we heard around 660 people. We found out that's not quite right. There's somewhere around 61 of the Valdez citizens use the pool cover in the wintertime. Somewhere between 50 and 100 people outside the Town of Valdez use the pool in the wintertime. That seems like a lot of money. We've got 4,700 citizens in the Town of Valdez. We've got 61 people using the pool cover in the wintertime. That seems quite a lot of money for 61 people. And in the meantime, we also got the fire department that we're getting ready to build. We've got the police department, we're getting ready to take off. You put all 1.2 or 3 million in the pool cover right now for 61 people. Somehow, that just doesn't make sense. So I think we need to take another look at, put that on hold for a while. And maybe at the next budget plan, y'all can get that in there. That would be a great help for our, we've got a lot of stuff coming up. And you're looking at 4 million or more for the police department. Two or two and a half million for the fire department. Now, where are we going to get the money? Also, the next budget, you may be looking at a tax increase, which we just give the people a tax decrease. And I've looked at the budget, what you make now, and I don't think you can do all that and still keep the same tax rates we have now. It would really be hard pressed to do that. And like when I went to talk to the people before the last election, I met a lot of people that couldn't afford another $100. I know I've read some comments about people saying, "Well, you know, you don't want to pay taxes." A lot of people can't pay taxes. They pay as much as they can, that's about it. And I just hate to put that burden on the people that absolutely can't afford it. And just my opinion, and my opinions are like a lot of other guys.
Okay, Alan King.
Sir, I wrote my comments down so I wouldn't read them fast and leave anything out. Alan King, 929 Main Street West, as Ward Four, better known as the redhead stepchild of Valdez. Home of liquor stores, tattoo parlors, and even possibly future strip clubs. I've come this evening with a proposal for your consideration. My wife and I would love to stay healthy, and every so often, we take a walk from our home to a town. There's a problem, however. The sidewalk on Main Street makes an abrupt stop just past Dollar General, and we're forced to cross a busy highway of Roller Street to continue our journey. It's treacherous, and I fear that one day we'll be run over. So I would like to see a pedestrian bridge built across Highway 70. Of course, it would need to be at least 15 feet high so the trucks and mobile homes can pass under it. This new safety feature would probably only cost the town a few hundred thousand dollars as I'm sure the federal government would kick in the rest of the 2 or 3 million that it might cost. But please don't discount the added benefits this would bring to the town. I mean, this would create a tourism boon to Valdez, which would bring billions into the town coffers. I have no proof of that, but it sounds good to say it. Kind of like when I tried to persuade my wife that an overpriced fishing rod will save our family thousands of grocery dollars from the fish I might catch. Again, no proof of that, but it sounds good to say. I just think it would be nice for the folks on the west side of town to get a little bit of taxpayer money. I mean, why not build sidewalks on our ward? There's fat people on Crow Hill that could benefit from tax dollars making walking a little easier for them, too. I just, of course, if we want exercise, we just get in our cars and drive to the parking lot on Lake Road His Drive because sadly, there are no sidewalks on Crow Hill. But do you know what else doesn't exist? A standalone police station or structurally safe fire department. $300,000 would go a long way toward those projects. $300,000 would allow Chief Sharp to pay our fine police officers what they're worth rather than them being paid less than any other police department for a town our size. I know proponents of the sidewalk to nowhere would say, "Well, the federal government is covering most of the costs. They're kicking in nearly $2 million toward the project." I don't want the federal government spending that kind of money on unnecessary projects. Enough is enough. You folks are stewards of our tax dollars, and at the rate we're going, you're going to run out of other people's money. Then there's the pool issue. I've sat in these chambers and listened time and time again to folks, most of whom don't even live in Valdez and don't pay city taxes, go on and on about how important it is to maintain a year-round pool. I'd like to know how many people from within and without Valdez actually use the pool, especially in the winter. I would guess less than 100 people. And if 100 people use the pool and we spend $2 million to build a structure for it, that comes to $20,000 per person. So can I have my bridge over Main Street? Of course I can. That wouldn't be practical or fiscally responsible. I know you want to be popular with the people, and I know you want to be re-elected. But you know, we voted for some of y'all on the council because you made the promise to lower taxes, which you did, and to eliminate wasteful spending and bring accountability to town management. I have watched for years, former councils and mayors pass out money like it was candy to every special interest group, every pep project, every women wish of the elites of this town. You promised to stop that, even if the federal or state government is offering the foot part of the bill while taxpayers bear the remaining cost. There is a word that I encourage you to make a part of your governmental vocabulary. And that word, you ready? No. Just say no. There's anything that we've learned since September is that the government is not going to bail us out of crisis unless you're a millionaire celebrity in California. I hope we'll also realize that multimillion-dollar sidewalks and swimming pool sheds won't answer our call when we're facing wildfires or robberies, or when we're being assaulted or our house is burning down. So I encourage you, just say no.
Thank you. Susan Stevenson.
My name is Susan Stevenson. I live at 1009 Creekside Drive, Valdez, North Carolina. And mayor, council, town manager. Thank you for this opportunity to speak with you tonight. We're starting a new year, and I just felt like it was a good time to address my severe concerns about the status of our town. I have several major concerns, and these include the public safety building, the road conditions, the town manager position, and more. But tonight, my main concern, I think, is because it's getting addressed immediately, is the pool structure. I was present at the last council meeting when it was voted to approve this project. I assumed it was approved. But I did see that it was to be addressed again tonight. So please stand by your decisions and do not backpedal on this project. Our citizens have seen too many of the projects that are put out there, including the public safety buildings. Everything has been on the agenda for years, and we're not getting anywhere. So please, don't take a step backward, let's go forward. Our town has always been respected and been praised as a wonderful part of western North Carolina. And we're not getting anywhere. I feel like we're backpedaling. So anyway, the pool project has many hours of work and dedication by so many knowledgeable people. You have presented a good structural and financial plan. It's something that we have needed for a long time. Bubble went up in 2000. Supposed to last 10 years, it lasted 25 years. If we don't do anything now, then we're out of that. A year-round pool is very valuable. You look, our senior citizens, they have very limited things they can do in this town. They come, they go to the pool. If you take with no cover, there is no winter activity, so they lose their activity level. And when you're elderly, or even when you're not, when you stop an activity for several months, then you lose what you gained. It's also very valuable for our young students. They get to have their swim meets there, they get their swim team. The kids get to have their winter birthday parties there. It has a lot of benefits for our town. It makes our town look good instead of nothing. We're losing businesses, you know, we're not making progress with anything. So please, this is one of our major things. About six years ago, I was in Asheville, and this lady found out I was from Valdez. She said, "Oh, my daughter was on the swim team, and we came to swim meets in Valdez." She said, "That is the neatest town, and your recreation center and your pool is so nice." And so people around here knew about Valdez, and we respect the town that we are. So anyway, I just want to request that you do something positive for our town. During this last election cycle, you said that we would have no loss of services. Well, the year-round pool is one of our services. It's very important, and we don't need to lose it. It is an important one that we should not lose. So all I ask is please stand by your previous conviction, move forward with this project, and then you can check this project off the need-to-do list and focus back on the others that haven't progressed any further. Thank you.
Margaret Friedel.
So I'm Margaret Armarty Sundell, 3018 Fairport Avenue in Valdez. Two things, mayor, council, and staff. Can you hear me okay?
Uh huh.
Okay. First of all, the pool. I'm part of a group of regular swimmers who support your vote for a new pool cover. It appears the bubble days are over. If you approve a permanent structure, I believe you're setting in place a firmer foundation, and families can rely on it to be open for business, and I believe the numbers will improve. Okay, secondly, I did want to speak tonight mostly in terms of the $1.43 million in federal money. That is correct. We've got $1.43 million that was funded in June of last year. This is a standard DOT agreement where our cost is $286,000, spread out over five years. When we get federal funding, we use it. Now, we are six months past being funded for Phase One of the sidewalk project. Again, we are an award recipient of $1.43 million, and now are we saying we don't want it? We have a plan funded for, in sidewalk project Phase One, Laurel to Crescent, with Phase Two being Crescent to Lakeside Park. I sang councilman's praise for going after the grant, and we got the grant due to his vision as well as the hard work of the staff who did the legwork. Over other towns who also applied, the Town of Valdez was awarded and awarded a grant for $1.43 million. This is where we accept it. We can accept the grant money and fund this project, paying only 20% of the total amount. Attorney, of course, will need to check out the contract, that will be a process. But as it stands now, $286,000 is what we will pay over five years for an almost $1.5 million project. To refuse to use this grant, I think, is to tell the government, "We will not be taken seriously in applying for future funding." I don't know if you can see that or believe that. You could possibly jeopardize our future funding. So you have a solid project before you benefiting the current residents, employees, visitors to the area, future residents. By approving, you have the opportunity to be a part of North Carolina's larger mission. Please help move the town forward. Please take the next step and vote to approve. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Small.
I'm Mark Small, 72 Marie Avenue. Good evening, council and mayor. As a kid, we marked the pages in the Sears catalog of all the things we wanted for Christmas. As adults, we add items we want to our Amazon shopping cart. But we know full well, we can't afford them all. Government seems immune to this realization. Funding or committing to funding for every project is ridiculous. Remember, needs, not wants. And I do understand the federal grant and 80%, 20%, but that's still 20% that the town's committing to that could go to something else. In past council meetings, it's been brought to light multiple items that need funding. The police and fire billing, water and sewer plant upgrades and replacement, which were very expensive. Street repairs and repaving. Some of this is pending and deferred or deferred into the future. Plus, often when underground pipe work is done, it turns out that the pipes are many decades old and need costly replacements. And don't let us forget about the pool cover that we've committed to, and that's going to be very costly in and of itself. So I say, before the town council commits to any more amenities spending, let's take care of our critical infrastructure and essential services first. As a side note, remember looming in the background is a potential financial bombshell for citizens having to replace old piping and plumbing in their homes to meet EPA regulations. That's in addition to the taxes that we already pay. That's looming. A letter was sent out about this. If we want these nice amenities for the town, let's focus on a larger tax base. New industry, expansion of existing industry, and new market value housing construction. Not more taxes. New amenities on the existing tax base are unsustainable and fiscally irresponsible. Underfunding our infrastructure to address amenities first endangers our town budget. To borrow a cliche, the town has champagne taste while most of us citizens have beer budgets. So just like the wanted items in our Amazon shopping cart, we can't afford them all. So in regards to the sidewalk project, I'll end by quoting the movie line, "How about no?"
Okay, thank you. Lynn Cabot.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me speak today. I'm Lynn Cabot. I live at 822 Gardena Avenue. I have a question tonight. What has happened? What has happened to our town? I've been here all my life, and up until just recently, we sort of ticked along and did our thing and were a much smaller, small little town. Now we seem paralyzed. We can't move forward, we can't cover the pools, we can't build what we need for our police and fire. We can't find a town manager. We can't go ahead with the sidewalk project. And lastly, we're spending way too much money on our town attorney. I'm just, I'm real disappointed in the way this is going. And I know y'all probably don't care that I'm disappointed, but I just feel like we are terribly paralyzed. We are in the same place we were a year ago. Your citizens want you to move forward with things. We don't know why you can't. Why is it that we just come back month after month and try to re-decide something? Talking about the pool, we thought that was a done deal. Talking about the fire and police, Lord, we thought that was a done deal three or four times. Had to be restudied, spent more money on it, more studies. You know, you talk about the tax base. I'm part of that tax base. Y'all know that I'm a widow. I don't have a ton of money. But I, that is part of being a citizen, is to pay your taxes for the services that you want. And I'm willing to do that with a reason, as are all of us, pretty much, I would hope. I know there are people less fortunate than me, they can't manage that. But there are sometimes things in place that can help that. So I just think that we need to begin to move forward. If we don't, we're never going to find a town manager who wants to work with us because we're not willing to step out and make progress for this town. I hope you'll all consider that. Very important to a very many of your constituents. It's just, you're paralyzed. Let's stop that tonight and try to move forward. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Terri Morris.
Well, I'm definitely the odd woman out. I do not live in the Town of Valdez. I live in Morganton, 2284 Zion Road. I am one of the citizens you skunked, can put it point-blank on the water bill. Our water bill went up 50%. We pay 57.75 for a base water bill. I have two. I'm also a widow, and a recent widow. I don't appreciate paying $116 for two water bills. So understand, there are a lot of neighbors on Zion Road on fixed incomes. There are widows and widowers. There's one neighbor with a brain tumor, another that... There's one neighbor with a brain tumor, another that just had hip surgery, so no one could come but me, but I'm finished. We are all looking at ways that we can, I will tie the two bills together. In the long run, I'll save a ton of money. I will also look at opening my well, which many of the neighbors are looking at opening their wells and redoing their wells. So the fact that I met with the town, or the county manager in December, and I find out exactly what I just heard, you got your property tax rates dropped by 10 cents for $100 value of your property. What did we get? We got a 50% hike on our water bill. I don't think that's fair for nearly 800 residents to foot the bill for your tax reduction. I would be glad to pay some taxes if I had some benefit from it, but all I get is water, and as anyone of my neighbors would tell you, and I've lived there for 30 years, it's not even good water. Now, do I like the, the plant, uh, the people that work at the plant, at your water treatment plant? Yes, I do. They've been very helpful when we've had leaks, but I've actually had a town manager suggest, "I run a hose from the back of my house to the barn. How's that going to work for me in January, like right now? And that would be a way that I could fix my problem." It's not a way to fix the problem. I'm going to have to pay a plumber to run a line and connect the two. I'm willing to do that at this point, because us that were former triple community water residents are very upset. You gave us no options, no input, no ability to appeal. The last time I asked to appeal was when the town manager told me I could run a hose to the horses. The most recent call I made to the town manager, he said that we were paying, our water bill was already higher, once you grabbed on to 700 and some residents, or however many are in the triple community district, that our bill was higher because you had put in extra heavy industrial equipment, and we were paying for that. Well, I just want you to understand, I did too admire the town of Valdez. I have thoroughly enjoyed being in this county for 35 years, but we're going backwards when we're footing the bill about 800 people for the fact that you dropped your property tax rate. So that's how the citizens on Zion Road and Morganton feel. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, council, next item on the agenda, Item 7, the consent agenda. Are there any items council wishes to be removed from the consent agenda?
No, no, Mr. Mayor, two things.
Consent agenda.
Uh, I'd like to, I do want to remove three items, but I also would like to add an item to the agenda. Uh, what order do you want me to?
Go ahead.
Uh, I'd like to add, uh, an item to the agenda, the, uh, interim town manager contract amendment. If that's something that you need to motionize, I shall move it. I think the town attorney noted, said we need a second maybe.
That's correct.
Okay, y'all have heard the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Those in favor, sign five, saying yes, and raising your right hand.
Yes.
Yes.
Seeing none opposed, the motion carries. Well, at that, that'll be our first item under new business.
Thank you. Then I ask that we remove Items F, 7, F, G, and H from the consent agenda.
Okay, council, I'll ask for the motion to approve the consent agenda minus Items F, G, and H.
I shall move it.
Second, please.
Second.
Thank you. Those in favor, sign five, saying yes, and raising your right hand.
Yes.
Yes.
Seeing none opposed, motion carries. Okay, Councilman Harvey, Item M.
Okay, uh, I'm, I should have those removed, just for a little more clarification. People sitting here tonight and who may be viewing the live streaming, and may look at the minutes later, would not know what, uh, Item F is about unless we give them a sentence or two explanation. Item F is approval of resolution supporting House Bill 971 and compliance with NCGS 143-805. Attorney Swanson could explain that better than me, but I'll, I'll take a shot at one sen- one sentence. All that is, is it says that employees, town officials cannot use any kind of device or the, such as an email server for inappropriate or illegal information, like pornography. That's what that means. That's it.
Okay. Any questions, council, on that? Item G.
Okay, G, uh, I just, we, we gave, uh, by this consent agenda, we gave our interim manager a pretty long list of duties to, uh, evaluate, develop, plan, and report on these things. The first item under G is I, town's opportunity to participate in federal disaster relief funding. Given what's been in the national news for the last week, I would like to expand that to put special attention on looking for opportunities for federal funding for wildfire prevention. And I've had two interactions, experiences with foresters, uh, on property. One ended up very positively, the other one not too good, because the other people in the community didn't accept his recommendations. They, in turn, that community lost 1,000 acres to a wildfire. And that was, that was in McDowell County, it wasn't that far from here. Before I got here, I've heard stories about the fire that up on the mountain that came down towards I-40 and caused a lot of damage and a lot of concern. The, the one reaction, my first reaction of Valdez when I first drove through it about 2005 was, it's a beautiful little town, and maybe my second reaction was, you know, if all these wooded lots were cleared of undergrowth and deadfall, this would be the most beautiful town in North Carolina. And I recognize that would be a huge undertaking, great expense for individual property owners who own these vacant lots, and would take tremendous funding, coordination. I mean, I never brought that up until we hear what's going on in California, one of the worst disasters of this nation. We don't have San Antonio, wind's here, but we do have droughts, and we've seen fire get fairly close, and I'm telling you, if fire ever started spreading on one of our dry August drought periods through Valdez, and we happen to catch some wind like we did, uh, not too long ago, that would take embers throughout this town, I mean, it could set the town on fire. And I think if the, I had a feel, I had a feeling that the federal government is going to be real sensitive about this and maybe come forth with a lot of, uh, federal funding to address this problem, which is nationwide, it's not just in California, but it's nationwide. And if that happens, I just want to make sure we don't miss the boat on that one. So just want to call out the attention of the interim manager and everybody's attention that we need to watch out for that.
Uh, would this come about in the fun, in, um, this federal funding, would it be in the form of a grant? Yes, yes.
I would imagine so, yeah.
And would it have a match?
I can't, I can't speak to that, I'm sorry.
But you know, but it is what the federal government.
Okay, well, we just need to be careful with grant funding, obviously.
Indeed, I have an example for that, though, I'm sure, there. Okay?
Okay.
Uh, H, I want to bring that one up because...
Would, I, can I ask you a favor, please? Would you go over the rest of those four, so, so council knows what we're talking about and the folks out in the audience would know also, please, sir?
Items 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6?
Yes, sir.
Uh, those items are on the agenda. Uh, I don't have any more to say about them than what's, what's here. With, left and right, they're on the, uh, in the agenda packet, so if anybody had any questions about them.
Does Bo understand what's implied by those? Does he know what to look for?
Yeah, I understand what they're, they are.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, council, anybody else have any questions? Item H.
H, okay. Uh, code enforcement, uh, just wanted to bring that one out, because we have citizens coming to the council meeting time after time, uh, pointing out examples like Becker Avenue has been in the council minutes twice in the last year or so. We have abandoned homes, we have violations of the town zoning ordinance all the time, and there's just example after example of it, and they persist. Our police department is doing, uh, as good a job as they can addressing it, but it's hardly a policing effort. I mean, we've, we've got a full-time sworn and armed officer who's got that responsibility. The police chief has to get involved with sending letters, and it's just, whatever, whatever we're doing isn't working, and it's taking a lot of effort. And, uh, we get some help from COG on that, the Western Piedmont Council of Governments, and, uh, uh, all I'm suggesting is, let's dig into that a little deeper. Let's see if we can't find a better way of doing this, because what we're doing now isn't working.
Okay. All right, any other questions, council? New business. Mr. Mayor, before we get into new business, I would like to request a closed session tonight after our meeting. Do I have a second for that motion?
Mr. Mayor, um, is that going to be under the?
Yeah, I apologize, you're right. For what reason?
Personnel.
Personnel, okay.
So I need to put that in the form of a motion? Please. Okay, I'd like to make that motion, we go into closed session. To discuss a personnel matter.
Right.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, ma'am. Any further discussion? Those in favor signify by saying yes and raising your right hand.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, under new business, first item, interim manager contract. Mr. Harvey.
Do we need to vote, do you need to vote on the three items that were moved from the consent agenda?
I apologize, my apologies. Council, go back to consent agenda. GH and FG and H. Mr. Harvey, do I have a motion to approve those items?
I shall move.
Okay, second, please.
Second.
Those in favor signify by saying yes and raise your right hand.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, now, item A, new business, interim manager contract. I have, uh, a motion, Mr. Harvey, sir.
I'm sorry?
The interim manager's contract, you want that added?
Oh, yes. We're, we're going to take it up now?
Yeah.
All right, uh, Attorney Swanson has shared with the council, uh, an amendment to the management, the interim manager's contract. The amendment simply changes the date of it. It says, instead of expiring December 31st of 2024, it continues until a new, uh, town manager is hired and, uh, starts. So I move that we, uh, approve the amendment that Attorney Swanson has drafted and recommended.
Okay, council, you heard the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Those in favor, sign five, saying yes, and raise your right hand.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you. Item A, public safety facilities update.
Do you have a mayor, council, sir? All right. So just a quick, uh, update on this here. So nothing's changed since, uh, reported last week on this, but, um, the request for qualifications process for the public safety facility, um, the solicitation was sent to 10 general contractors, so it's sent to them directly, who have the design build experience that we're looking for. Um, it was also posted on the North Carolina EVP recruitment website, which goes across the state, um, for anybody who signed up, this for engineers, architects, contractors, for any projects that, uh, local government may post out there. And then it was also shared with the Design Build Institute of America for them to pass around to anyone that they might know. So, um, responses to date, um, out of those 10 that I sent directly, I, they'd received one back that says they wouldn't be interested in the project, uh, due to their current workload. Did have three that had requested in toward the East Main Street building. The tour is not requirement of submitting a statement qualifications, but they were interested enough to make the time and trip up here, so that was a good signal for us. And then several acknowledged getting their, the emails, and they responded back, but they didn't comment on their level of interest there. So, um, overall, I think we've, we've got some good interests. The next step is to receive these, they're due at the end of this month, and then the review of those qualifications will begin early February, and then a selection of several to interview during late February. So we're still on track with that.
Sounds good. Thank you, sir. Item B, appointment of boards, commissions, and committees. Council appointments.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to make a motion that we appoint Mark Rosten to the planning board to fill the unexpired term of Roy Sweets.
Okay. I second that. Thank you. Any further discussion? Those in favor, sign five, saying yes, raise your right hand.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to make a motion that we appoint Benton Brinkley to the, um, alternate term on the planning board, filling the unexpired term of Barry Zimmerman.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Those in favor signify by raising your right hand, saying yes.
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 Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Jordan Green to the, um, alternate position on the planning board, to take the position of Cindy Stevens, who moved to the main part of this planning board.
Okay, do I have a second, council?
Second.
Thank you. Those in favor, sign five, saying yes, and raising your right hand.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Tom Oxentine to the facilities review committee. Tom, uh, works for the City of Hickory as a firefighter and has experience in, um, working with the firefighting and would help us as we design a fire station.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Those in favor?
Excuse me, I have...
Go right ahead.
May I, we've discussed this?
Go right ahead.
Uh, at the, the facilities review committee submitted their final report in December, and as I reported to the council members, I'm a little surprised to hear this, uh, motion tonight, the facilities review committee recommended that it be terminated, and, uh, that was, that was consensus of the committee. And as I reported at the December meeting, I, I, I did not make the motion to terminate it at that time, because I wanted to find out, first of all, if there was a role for the facilities review committee when it came time to reviewing, uh, the, uh, requests for quotations that is out now. Uh, we don't know what that role, if there is a role, we don't know what that is. The second, uh, thing is that, um, uh, with the, um, suppose the other, yeah, was the other, uh, well, that, that was, that was the, the key thing, is we didn't know if we had a role for the facilities review committee. And then the second thing is, the facilities review committee, when it was established last year, was, was carefully, uh, recruited, not recruited, but we had applicants from people with extensive construction of facilities... with extensive construction and facilities management experience. And as they presented their reports several times during the past year, it was 150 years of construction experience there. So we, I don't see that in this application, plus this applicant is a town employee, I'm not sure that's appropriate to have.
You've got town employees on your homeless and drug task force.
Sir?
You've got town employees on your drug and homeless task force.
We're talking to the Facilities Review Committee?
We're talking.
We're in a discussion, a debate about, about a motion here?
Yeah.
Okay. May I suggest, may I suggest that we would welcome the mayor to join the debate, but I think in accordance with our rules and Robert's Rules of Order, you should turn, you should relinquish the chair to the mayor pro tempus, so you can join the debate with us. Is that correct?
Thank you. All I'm doing is passing on information.
No, I'm, I'm just saying.
I understand, I'm not participating in debate, I'm telling you.
You're arguing with me?
No.
Yes, you are. You're bringing up a point that's irrelevant.
Go ahead, proceed, proceed on.
That's, but that's my point. We have, we have an applicant who doesn't have, I don't see anything on his application about his construction experience. I don't even know the gentleman. I think he's probably wonderful, and if he's one of our part-time firefighters, that's wonderful. And when we go forward with, when we hire a architectural firm to start working, and a construction company to start working with our fire chief or our police chief, I would expect them to bring their employees who are expert and ha, and have that kind of experience with fire stations and police stations, to work with the police chief and the fire chief and, and bring information in. But the Facilities Review Committee is not, is not that. The Facilities Review Committee is something else. So anyway, I just, I don't, I think this appointment is premature, that was my initial request.
Mr. Mayor, we have a motion and a second. Can we move forward with a vote?
So do we currently have no one on the facility? You said it terminated, so do we even have anyone on that committee currently? Would it just be a one-person committee? Is that what we're looking at?
We have, we have three people who have not resigned.
Okay.
Two of them agree we should terminate the committee.
Okay.
Along with the two who retired, who resigned and said, we're not serving a purpose, so we resign.
Can I ask a question? We can't just, and you correct me, Mr. Attorney, if I go astray, we can't just terminate a committee because it's created by resolution. And you correct me also if I go astray, ma'am. We have to terminate the committee by resolution.
I agree with that.
Okay, is that what we need to do?
No.
Well then, let's...
Just think we're doing nothing.
Let's vote on the motion then, we've got a motion on the floor.
Thank you. Okay, counsel, I have a motion on the floor. Is everybody familiar with the motion?
Okay, the motion is that we appoint Tom Oxentine to the Facilities Review Committee.
Correct.
Is that correct?
That's correct, yes, sir, and I have a second. Yes, sir.
Yes.
Okay. Those in favor signify by saying yes and raising your right hand?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, those opposed?
Opposed.
Okay. Motion carries four to one. Thank you, counsel. Okay. Moving to the next item, C, personnel considerations relative to budget planning. And I think, Mr. Harvey, that's yours also.
As for council discussion, the compa pay salary and position study, I would like to move that one down under D and pick up, pick it up there. The review of employee benefits program, I think, actually another council member, I think, raised a question about the employee benefits program, but that's probably something that needs to be done, but I don't have anything to add to that. My concern is our staff development training plan and needs. We have $30,000 in this year's budget for staff development training. We haven't done any yet, as far as I know. We only have six months left in this fiscal year. So I'd like to know if interim manager has a plan, or if he'll give us a plan pretty quickly for doing some staff development training, so we can get it, take use of this budget and get our staff some essential training.
Okay, so for the training that's in the budget, just a reminder, there, there was $30,000 overall, $5,000 was for the police department, so their specific law enforcement training, and then 25 was for the rest of the town. So just wanted to make sure we remembered that correctly. So it was 30 total, but we really only had 25 for training. So going forward, we were holding off on this, pursuing anything like this until we got a permanent town manager, because that would be, you know, his employees. If council would like me to proceed with this, I will, and do an RFP to get the training started, get that process rolling. Another option would be to roll it into the next, if, if we don't get it done this budget year, we can reserve those money and roll it into the next one.
Correct.
So a couple of options there, I'm more than happy to, to head this up if we want to, or we can...
Counsel, what's your pleasure?
It would seem to me that it would be nice to wait till we have a manager in place and let a manager decide about what kind of training that might be needed for our employees. But at the rate we're going, who knows?
Anybody else?
Beau, the opportunities to find the training, what, are there through the council of government, or the school of government, I guess the UNC School of Government, or are there entities you can go to to find the best deal versus 30,000, a $30,000 package through some type of fancy company that's going to, in my opinion, be an overcharge, where there may be resources that we can pull from that we're already linked to?
Yeah, we reached, I did some preliminary investigation on this, just, you know, real bird's eye view stuff, and we reached out to the league, they, they don't have any specific training for this, stuff like this, but they do have some firms that they recommend for things like this. So it just depends on how deep of a level we want to get into, how much it'll cost. And that's, that's how we'll kind of style our RFP, if we go out for a RFP for this.
So these firms are suggested by the League of Municipalities, and so they would be geared toward government employees. That's what we want, is, is training geared toward government employees.
Yeah, there'd be a few of them that are recommended that we would send out. Of course, we share them with anybody who has this kind of skill set, but there are some that the league did recommend specifically.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a, there are a lot of ways to go at the train, there's all kind of opportunities out there. I was based for a long time, research travel park, and we drew on Duke's Business School. And it depends what kind of training you're looking for. I mean, we have, we, we have department heads here, none of whom have had any supervisory training of any kind. So something as simple as basic supervisory training. I think of a lot of schools that could probably do that kind of training. Then you get into process improvement, that's pretty fundamental stuff. I mean, mo, most schools are, have courses on, on that subject. So I think that, you know, there are a lot of, a lot of where, a lot of places to find that kind of training. I don't know that it needs to be advanced, government-based training, I think we need some, team building, I mean, team building is something, but that's, that's pretty generic. So, yeah, there's a lot of opportunities, but, you know, if the council thinks we ought to wait till we get a manager, or wait for any reason, I just, I'm concerned that we, we have not, in all the time I've known Valdez, I've never seen any, any staff training done to any extent. And I've been concerned about that, and I was, I was, I kind of pushed that, like, well, let's get that in the budget, let's, let's budget for it. We did. And so if we want to not use it or put it next year, it's up to the council.
There, there has been staff training done, Mr. Harvey. I, I understand you weren't aware of, I've got no problem with that, but I was an employee for 40 years, we had, we had staff training. Counsel, what's your pleasure? How would you like Mr. Wykel to proceed? Come on, folks, talk to me.
I mean, it seems unto me in each department, there are certain things that need to be, you know, they would have to have training for, so I'm assuming that 30,000 goes toward that, like, is that what, what this is? Or is this like special, like, learn how to treat the people of the public training?
I think you're looking at, like Mr. Harvey said, team building, leadership, things of that nature.
We, we have department-specific training that already goes on.
That needed to be clarified for the public, so they would know what we're talking about. I didn't want them to think we were taking money from our police or fire, and they're trying, they have to have specific things too, so. I make a motion that we roll it over into the next budget.
Second.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Just one, one point, I'm, I'm, I don't have a problem with that, but the Valdez Town Council focus areas for '24, '25 out of our strategic plan, number one, employee retention and recruitment, and that was our number one priority, so I think employee training is part of that, so. Anyway.
Mr. Mayor, are we, when we vote on this, are we voting one, two, and three? Are we just voting on C?
Just right now, C, sir.
Okay.
The staff development training, C3.
Have we done anything with one and two?
Mr. Harvey moved item one down to D, I believe, and review of employee, I think, for me, review of employee benefits and that's, that type of things should be done when we get a full-time manager. I think that would be best, thank you. Okay, counsel, I have a motion and a second on the floor to move the employee training to the, possibly next year or when we get a full-time manager. All those in favor, signify by saying yes and raise your right hand?
Yes.
Yes.
Those opposed? Motion carries, thank you, counsel. Okay, item D, Mr. Harvey?
Okay, that is our, uh, let's see, I'm flipping my agenda around, maybe make sure I get on the right page. Item D is management consulting RFP. The concept here is to hire a consulting firm to come in and analyze the town's organizational structure, staff structure, and along with the interim manager or the manager, and make recommendations on the organization structure, on the staff structure. And then, along with the interim manager or the manager, get into each of the departments one by one and analyze the operations in depth. That's something that we hoped the efficiency task force would undertake, but that didn't go off too well. And frankly, it's probably, you know, maybe because that wasn't their area of expertise. But in any case, there are companies out there that do that kind of thing. So, you know, around Christmas time, I, I sent out just a short note out to a few, four or five consulting firms to see if they, some of them say they do work with public entities, but I asked them, you know, if they'd be interested. And one of them replied and said, well, you know, we're a management consulting firm, we're based in Greensboro, you're in North Carolina, we, we do full-scale management consulting with small businesses, small businesses being, being mostly family-owned businesses up to maybe 100, 200 million dollars, but as small as a few million. And they wanted to know if they could have a 30-minute conversation with me about it to see what we were doing. I set that up, but then I invited Mr. Wykel to join that, and Councilwoman Ward had some questions about this when it came up at the preliminary meeting, so I asked her if she was available, that, so we had a half, half-hour virtual discussion with them. And I found, I found it very interesting, but I found it enlightening in this regard, what, what they suggested they would do, and what they always do if they're going to undertake a consulting project, is they would first want to do a phase one, do a study, and, you know, that's not very expensive, but they'd come in, look at the organization, and then make a proposal for what they think, what they think needs to be done and what that would cost. Now, what's interesting about that is that's exactly what we're doing with our RFQ with the design build for the public safety buildings, because that's what these general contractors who respond to this RFQ are going to come, they're going to come back with the one we select, they're going to do design and studies, and they're going to come in and make recommendations. And that's going to be, I think, the way we have the RFQ written, that's maybe 30% of what, what the contract would be. And then after the council decides what it wants to do, they'll put together a contract to do the work, get the, get the work done. And that's basically what the management consulting firms suggested. So, anyway, if we boil this down, what I, what I would recommend, and I guess I'd put it in the form of a motion, is that we ask the interim manager to issue an RFP, a request for proposals, we don't need to do an RFQ for a non-constructions project. So issue an RFP to management consulting firms and see what kind of response we get. And based on his participation in this 30-minute conversation the other day, he, we would probably shape it around a phase one, where you'd come in and look at us and tell us what you recommend, and then phase two is, next phase, that comes back to the council as a proposal. So I would like to move that we have the interim manager issue a request for proposal, a request for proposals for management consulting firms to come in and evaluate the town of Valdez's operations.
Any idea how much something like that costs?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm, I made a motion that we do, that we issue a request for proposals, I have no idea what the cost is.
That answers my question, do I have a second?
We have, yeah.
Second.
All right, so then to comment further on that, we don't know what this, we may not get any responses, and then, if that costs us a penny, we may get three or four responses, and we don't like any of them, it won't cost us a penny. So that's all I'm suggesting, let's go request a proposal out there. Deloitte, which is one of the biggest management consulting firms in the country, they say on their website that they do management consulting with cities, towns, counties, states, government agencies. So there's one that we know, they say they do that, we don't know what the others do, but let's find out.
Would this include the pay salary study?
Pardon me?
Does this include the salary, pay salary study that we talked about?
No, no, it does not, but I did, I did mention that I would pick that up here. And the reason is, if we get, if we do an organizational structure, and that should end up in a different kind of staff structure, different alignment of positions, numbers of people reporting to people and that kind of thing, we would want to do that before we did an in-depth comparable pay study and definition of job descriptions. That's the kind of thing that human resources consultants do. Actually, and, so I think that would be a recommendation that might come out of a management consulting firm, they might say, yeah, you know, in the end, if we accepted their second phase and went ahead with it, they might come up with a different structure, that's what we're going, we should look at evaluating the, the positions and the salaries that ought to be, that would be covered in that new structure. This firm we talked to briefly, I mean, we, we weren't trying to come to any conclusion at all, but did ask them, do you have the capability on your staff to do salary studies? And I said, yeah, we have done that, so that, now, that's on down the road, I think. But my point is, let's see if we could get a management consulting firm that gives us a proposal that looks good. But my point is, let's see if we could get a management consulting firm that gives us a proposal that looks good to take a look at our, our complete operation. And if we do, then let's, let's take that first. I will, I will add one more thing here that, uh, we, uh, that pertains to this, I can do it from memory. The last time the town did a pay study, a salary study, the, it was, uh, it was reported to the council in, uh, March twenty-nineteen. The work was done in twenty-eighteen. The recommendation at that time was the town should budget five-hundred thousand dollars to bring all the salaries up to a competitive pay re, pay level. The council, I, I remember, Mayor, I was just, I was sitting in that budget workshop when that was, presentation was made. I remember Mayor Black saying almost exactly the same thing, Mayor Watts said when this came up at the last meeting. If we do this, we better be prepared to deal with it because employees are gonna have expectations if they find out that they're not being paid enough, and I agree with that. In fact, I agree we oughta pay them enough. But, uh, anyway, that's, uh, oh, and that council, how'd they deal with that? The last, at that time, they approved, I think, a hundred and thirty thousand dollars maybe at one month, so could bring some of the salaries up. And, uh, there was some unevenness in that and a lot of, there was a lot of employee dissatisfaction with the way that was handled. So, I mean, that's just one more reason why, at some point in time, we gotta decide if our employees really need three-hundred thousand dollars budget increase to bring them up so that they're fairly paid, what's more important? That or all these other projects that we get requested support?
Mr. Mayor, I had a couple things, if I may.
Sure.
Um, one is, in my work experience at, um, in pharmacy, we went through a period of a management consultant firm looking at our hospital system. And it was long, it was tedious, and it went to some black coal that nothing was ever done with. That, I just wanted to throw that out there, 'cause when you say management consultant, it brings back nightmares. Um, secondly, I think Mr. Harvey maybe said there was an entity out there that looked at public service or government. I mean, I really think we need to look at, if we get this far in it, that we need to look at a firm that's looking at what we do, that we're not trying to use a square peg in a round hole kind of situation. And the third thing was, and I think looking at some of the background information, that we have a pay study in our long-term plans, maybe in twenty-seven, twenty-eight, there's money budgeted for that, I guess in the ca, I don't know what category that is. Um, but there, that's still out there to be done somewhere down the road. So, I mean, that is being looked at, it's not like it's not being planned for, or that you guys haven't planned for it in the future, so.
I don't, I don't know where that is, uh, that pay study, future pay study, I don't know anything about that.
The ten-year plan.
On the other hand, I do know of numerous examples of management consulting studies that have been very successful, so, uh, across organizations. So, anyway, I mean, this, we can go out, we can try to get proposals, we can judge whether it's good or not, or we can pull in our tent and just do nothing.
Okay, are we ready to vote? Counsel, I have a motion and a second on the floor, and, and Mr. Harvey, if you would, sir, please repeat your motion so we can catch up. Please.
My motion would be to, uh, for the interim manager to issue a request, request for proposal to management consulting firms, uh, seeking, uh, proposals to, uh, study the town of Valdez operations.
Okay. Have a motion and a second. Those in favor signify by raising your right hand and stating yes.
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 Okay, those opposed signify by saying no and raising your right hand.
No.
No.
Okay, motion fails. Okay, uh, did that get everything you wanted to cover, sir?
I guess so.
Okay. Item E, status of ongoing or approved projects. I think Mr. Weichel's coming up.
All right, so just, uh, there are a few of what we've got, few of the projects we got going on. The, uh, citizens' priority survey, it, it was mailed out with the utility bills, and also the online version is out there. Um, so that's been active since January second, and it will remain so through the end of February. And then, uh, another, the same, it's the same survey, but just in case folks, uh, didn't miss, missed it, or there's someone in the house, else in the household that would like to take that survey, it'll also be mailed with the February bills. Okay. The, uh, rec center pool cover projects, we're gonna get to that in item G. It'll have the AIA contract, and then we'll, we can talk about the ADA work too at that point. Let's see. The pool cover capital fund drive, I would just recommend that we talk about that in item G as well, for those to go together. Uh, Hoyle Creek restoration side path project, so, um, let's talk about that a little bit here. So, if you recall, that's the, um, funding, that discretionary funding we got from the state, two-point-two million dollars to do a, uh, side path, uh, along Lake Rogers Drive, and also to do some stream restoration, maybe a bridge or two across this, uh, Hoyle Creek. So, um, we went out, did the RFQ process to retain engineering design services, which we have done. And with that consultant, uh, it's McGill Associates, we had a meeting with them, a kickoff meeting in mid, uh, December with them. And their staff has began to do an existing condition survey, uh, along that area. And they'll continue with their field collection study for the month of January and February. And they're also scheduled to begin their environmental, uh, field surveys in late, late this month. And then also because that is a DOT-owned road, we have to coordinate with them, so there's some meetings being set up, some preliminary things that we need to, to coordinate with them to make sure the project is smooth. So that's kind of where we are in that project. And the sidewalk project, Long Love Lady, we're, we're gonna do in item I there.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, questions, council?
The Hoyle Creek project, do we have engineering drawings of what, what that's gonna be?
Not yet, they're, that's sort of their work in arms for surveys and stuff. We do have some preliminary, but nothing that's concrete, 'cause we, we need to meet with the DOT and make sure what, what's being proposed can happen.
Yeah, my understanding of that was it was a, it was a walkway, that the creek was being shaped and protected and guided or whatever, and it would be a walkway along it, is that correct?
Yes.
Was there a bridge across it?
Uh, there'll be one or two bridges, depending on what, what the funds allow, that cross over to the, the, uh, walking paths of the park. So that there will be a crestender path along the road that winds with the creek.
But those bridges would not, they'll, they'll be back along the creek somewhere.
Right, they'll be pedestrian bridges, you can't draft across it, it'll just be the walk across.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any further questions? Counsel, if you don't mind, let's take a five-minute break, please, a recess, and be back in five minutes.
Yes, I think they do have a, a, there's not a town membership card they scan, it's a silver sneaker.
It's like a little silver snaker card, but it's not a town membership card.
That may be something we need to look in doing, then, is if they're doing, silver sneakers have that as something that can be scanned, so we do have updated.
And that's kind of falls under the day passes, I'll just kind of wrap all that together.
Gotcha.
Basically, we're not doing, have to do a manual way, instead of a computer tracking system, just do a manual, you know, or jot it down, have them sign in, put it in a spreadsheet, kind of track it that way, so.
So is that, is the silver sneakers revenue that the town gets included in those numbers up there?
Um, yes, I, it's all captured under a, the, the revenues for the, the aquatic center.
Okay.
Um, the, the, the numbers here, the usage numbers don't reflect that, but the, the dollars is, is from our, uh, system, yeah. Okay, um, so, what I've done here, we, we all know how much the contract cost is. What I wanted to present here is the impact on what we're currently at, and then the potential a, as, if we go through with the project. So, to date, we've paid the architect ninety-thousand four-eight-six. We also had to do some geotechnical services where they did soil borings to see our soil conditions. The architect needed that to do their engineering design, that was sixty-five-hundred dollars. So that's, that, about ninety-seven thousand is what we've got out of pocket so far on this project. Um, if we go through with the construction process, uh, we'll, the rest of the architect's contract is about twenty-two thousand to do that. Then we got the health bid. We also have the ADA work that we have to do in order to be compliant with the grant, which, uh, we've got separate out from the health bid, and I'll get to that in a second. So, uh, those, all those items there, including the current out-of-pocket, uh, about a little over two million. And then, now we've got the grant, and then we got a private donor contribution, that totaled six-hundred thousand coming off of that. So, we know, uh, at worst-case scenario, one-point-four-three million would be the amount for this project. We also have the capital campaign that's gonna kick off, um, with a goal of three-hundred thousand. So any amount of that three-hundred thousand would bring that one-point-four-three down farther. I know Mr. Compton's available to speak on the capital campaign, do we wanna go into that now, or do we wanna, how do we want to?
Counsel.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Compton, and then I can come back up and answer some more questions.
Thank you, Bud.
Okay, Bud, you're gonna have to show me how to get back on the screen.
Oh, yeah.
I apologize, I'm gonna get your wife. He's right there.
Okay.
I'm not too technologically savvy, neither are you. Okay, uh, good evening, members of, of the town council, my name is Scott Compton, I am the acting chairperson for the Parks and Recreation Commission. Uh, you, upon request, you wanted to know where we stood in the development of the capital funds campaign, uh, to help support the funding of the pool structure. Just wanna let everybody know that, uh, we have initiated a framework, uh, in which we're going to work on. This is, uh, based on, uh, so, sort of historic knowledge provided to us by Dan Anderson, and also mirrors a lot of the capital campaign drive that we did with the Wayne Owens gymnasium. Uh, so at this time, uh, the donation request letter has been drafted. Uh, we have established a tier system, uh, that people would be able to, uh, donate in order to, uh, gain acknowledgement. Uh, we have plans for the donor recognition wall, or a plaque that will be, uh, placed in the pool lobby room. Uh, and we also, uh, would want to have banners in the pool area that designate, uh, uh, specific sponsors. Uh, we have two fundraising events that, uh, we can initiate as early as February. Uh, we have a polar plunge, uh, for next month, and then in the summer, we will have a swim-a-thon as well. These will both be, uh, opportunities for, uh, the greater community to be involved in fundraising events, okay? Uh, at this time, we cannot initiate this project until we have finalization, uh, approval of the contract. Uh, once the contract is approved, then, uh, pretty much, uh, all the balls that are in here that we're currently juggling will, will begin, um, to land accordingly. So at that time, we can finalize website, uh, we can send the finalized request letter, letters to community patrons, uh, send out a formal press release, and we can start, uh, a marketing campaign when we print posters in the pool fitness center and lobby. Also, at that time, we can initiate what I think is extremely important, where we can, uh, issue our donation request letters to potential corporate sponsors, uh, to help offset that cost. Uh, our plan was to begin this project in January, as I just said, uh, pending the approval of the town council, we can begin this project, uh, almost immediately afterwards.
Thank you. Questions, council?
So I'm assuming you would know this too, I, I've heard the number two-hundred-and-forty days is what they're kind of expecting it to take to have this in place. Is that going to affect summer swimming, um, when most of the kids and parents are begging for somewhere to go? Are we, is that gonna?
I should I go? I, I was gonna say, it's not my professional expertise to know that. I would say my layman's understanding is it will affect some of the traffic flow at, at the facility during the course of the summer months, yes.
And that would, I'm sorry, was that something I should have asked the man, I'm sorry, I didn't know if it was manager or who, so I was just curious.
He's standing there, you can, you can ask him a question. Councilman Harvey, did you have something, sir?
Did I? No, I just thought we might want Mr. Weichel to address, uh, the contract, I think you're talking about, you have a question about the contract, do you?
No.
No.
That's what you did. I thought, then, what's your question, does it, would the, would the work done under this contract interfere with the swimming?
Yeah, that was my biggest thing, is like during, during the summer, I know there, there's a lot of parents in springtime too, like when it gets warm. That's when my kids go, that's when a lot of kids, that's their thing to do, they wanna hit the pool. And are we shutting down the pool for a good portion of swimming for them to?
Yeah, I don't have an answer for you, Bud might, David might.
I, I'll answer that, let, let him, let him campaign, and then we'll, we'll get to that.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm finished.
I thought you were, that's why I asked, I was making sure.
But, yeah, the, uh, so to answer your question, the, the contract does have two-hundred-and-forty days to complete it, which is eight months.
Okay.
So theoretically, they did take the full eight months, we'd be in about August. Um, I think they're confident they can get it done a little sooner than that, so even in six months, it would still be cutting in the June-July time frame. Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, um.
Thank you, Scott.
One thing I kind of glazed over here on the grant part, um, it, it is effective for three years, starting last August when we were awarded. So this coming August will be year one, so we do have some time to use that grant. It, if, uh, we didn't fulfill that right now, then the grant would still be active, we wouldn't lose the grant, so.
Uh, we would lose the contract and the cost that we have right now in the contract.
Yes.
If what, what are you saying?
I'm saying that the cost will go up in this contract if we do not go with this contract at this time. Obviously, the cost will go up as the cost of building materials continues to rise.
Well, I think that would depend on if you were to rebid it, would it would go up for them.
We would have to rebid it.
Yeah.
Which may not be a bad thing, it seems like with our luck with actually going to contractors with, we, like we're doing with the design bill, bid, we're actually going to people and saying, hey, would you like to bid? Is, is that what I'm understanding we did with the, the design bid? We're actually trying to pursue people instead of just putting it out there. There is a possibility that our bids could go down. And I guess, I guess what I'm looking at right now is the fact that we could potentially say this is not a no, but we do have a public safety buildings issue right now that should be at the front line of everyone's mind. I don't know if y'all know this or not, but we had a stabbing on Main Street. If there has ever been a time that I wanna make sure our police and firefighters have exactly what they need, it is now. I walk the streets of Outies at five o'clock in the morning, and I do not feel safe until I see one of our police officers. I walk the streets of Valdez at five o'clock in the morning and I do not feel safe until I see one of our police officers pass. That is the best feeling in the world to know as a woman, I am protected. I we can have the nicest pool enclosure ever, but if we have not taken care of our police and firemen and they decide to go somewhere else because they don't feel valued, what do we have? I mean, that's the way I'm I'm sorry, that's everything coming out at one time, but I am very concerned about how we are um approaching things in our town. We have a strategic plan and I I told somebody the other day, and I'm gonna talk a lot tonight because these things matter to me. Um, I said, our town almost has ADHD and I can say that because I've been diagnosed properly. I may be unmedicated right now and a dumpster fire to some people, but that's me. Um, so I can I can say this, it's immediately this thing gets my attention, this thing gets my attention, this is louder than this, this is louder than this. And we do not follow a plan. So we did our strategic plan, which says public safety buildings first and then we follow the rest. First of all, I'm I'm sorry, it was the manager search, making sure we get a really good manager for our town, which it is not for lack of trying. We have been in meeting upon meeting, we have had several conversations and we have this is that is one thing that this council has worked together so great with. I want to give kudos to our council for working together like nobody's business to make sure we get a manager. It has just not panned out yet. I am sorry that our citizens can't be privy to all the information about our candidates, but according to attorney Swanson, our lips are sealed. We cannot say anything about who applied, who did not apply, who is wanting a job, who doesn't. We have got to follow the plan. We we really desperately need to. I'm not saying no to a pool enclosure. I know that that is near and dear to a lot of people that I care about, okay? I'm saying simply step back, let us get this finished and then move on to the next project. Or we're gonna be bound, that is why nothing is getting done because we are bouncing back and forth and back and forth. No, focus. One thing at a time, knock them out and then we get things done. And we're not constantly looking like we're spinning our wheels going, whoa, what do we do? No, we follow the plan that our citizens set forth for us. That was public safety is number one for us. And then everything else follows. It it just it works and I'm not saying a no, I'm saying can we please look at pausing? Because and this is another thing, you've got kids who are gonna want to swim this summer. Are y'all gonna be okay telling kids they don't have a place to swim this summer because we had people who want to swim in the wintertime? It didn't kill you this winter. It's not gonna be a bad thing for one more winter to not have a pool enclosure. There are other places you can go for one winter. It's simply a pause. Let's get the public safety done and then move to the next because we are working now on the public safety thing. And if another person says we haven't done anything on that or we keep on kicking the can, let's go back a few councils and talk about who kicked the can over and over and over again. So that's how I feel. I'm I'm tired of being looked at like I'm terrible. I want to see everybody have what they want. Yes, we need that, we need an enclosure for the pool because that is a big deal to Valdez. That's a great thing, but I do not think it's the time for it right now. We we are and I'm hearing that from so many people in my neck of the woods and Ward Five. You want to talk about Ward Four being the redheaded stepchild? I don't know what we are, but we're kicked out too because you know what we can't have? McGoweryard Falls had a park at one time, Ward Five had a park. They took it out. When we ask, where are the swings, where are the slides? Oh, we can't afford to maintain that anymore. Okay, where is our um our tennis courts that were in Ward Five? Oh, we can't, we don't have the money to maintain those. When we ask for sidewalks in Ward Five, it's always, oh, we don't have the money to do that. But by God, we've got all the money in the world to take care of everybody else while Ward Four and Ward Five suffer. And I'd be damned if the taxes go up again under my watch. No, we will make this work, but we're gonna have to take our time and show each other grace and follow the plan. That's it, sorry.
This might be a good time for me to make a comment there too.
I read it.
First of all, at our October seven meeting, the council unanimously voted that the number one construction priority was getting the police department, the police station, permanent police station done. Number one priority. I'm surprised that this thing kept moving forward because the council took a position. We let the whole town know, we let the Parks and Recreation Commission know. Our number one priority is in the minutes, October seven, council meeting. Number one priority is the uh public safety facilities. So I'm you know, I'm a little bit puzzled while we're dealing with this now, but but we are. Let me go a little bit, I'll go on quite as long as Councilwoman Heather.
I thought I haven't said a lot the whole time I've been on this council, but this is one thing that gets me fired up, sorry.
Well, I I can't be as eloquent as you just were, but uh one of the things, one of the things I I'll tell you something that registers really with me that drives me and we heard it tonight when uh Councilwoman Zerren was was sworn in. In when we're sworn in, our oath is and includes to the best of my abilities. Each of us said that, to the best of my abilities. That's how we're we swore that we would undertake our duties here. Our abilities are all different. I had graduate work in in management and finance. I spent thirty five years managing other people's money and I mean millions of dollars and in making bringing forth proposals to my boards. And they had to be sound and those proposals were fact based. And that's that's where that's how I look at these things. And I can't, I'm sorry, I can't set what I know on a shelf and say, I'll just go along with whatever wants to come down the road because the council doesn't need to make decisions based on what I know to be wrong. I mean, that's that's where I am. Uh, now, one of the things that we hear sometimes is that uh some people got elected here last year and they promised they weren't gonna cut services. Well, I mean, we didn't cut any services and and we're not talking about cutting services now, we're talking about timing. But let me just read from you, read read a bit, just a sentence, two sentences from the June twenty twenty two council workshop. That's when the budget was the fiscal year, uh twenty three budget was put together. That's the budget that we lived under during the first half of last year. That's the budget that gave Valdez taxpayers an average increase of sixty seven percent. Countywide, it was forty three percent, Valdez sixty seven percent. That budget, um, in the in the discussion in June, right before it was adopted, Councilman Ogil, that was not this Councilman Ogil, that was Councilman Keith Ogil of Ward Five mentioned, men, I'm reading this now verbatim. Councilman Ogil mentioned that we should look at a permanent structure for over the pool. Mr. Eckert, that's the town manager, stated that the exterior lining of the pool bubble is fine and the interior lining has been repaired, which should be good for at least ten more years. That was in June twenty twenty two. Within six months before that winter was over, that pool collapsed, I don't know how many times. The ironic thing then was we started hearing, if you elect Councilwoman Ward, if you elect Councilwoman Ogil, if you elect Councilman Harvey, who are asking you for your vote, they're gonna shut down the pool. We didn't shut down a pool. The ironic thing, and I go, I look for humor and everything and I and and this breaks me up every time I stop and think about it. On election day, when we became the new majority, we were elected as a new majority primarily because a lot of taxpayers were unhappy that they got hit with a sixty seven percent average tax increase. On election day, the pool collapsed, the bubble collapsed, the bubble was supposed to last ten years, collapsed. And then it was put up, it collapsed again. Now, let's just take let's take history history a little bit further on this topic. All right, in uh December of twenty twenty three, the uh rec center director, to his credit, had brought a few people together, new council members, rec center, uh existing council member. Uh, Lomond was there, uh, I was there, I think uh I think Mr. Compton was there, a few others. And he he had a proposal and he brought a group in to present the proposal to provide a new bubble and a new vent system. And as I recall, the cost was like four hundred and twenty three thousand dollars. And that was that was his recommendation at the time. And then uh that they had scheduled, that would have been up, it it would have been in place uh not twenty twenty three, twenty four, but it would be in would have been in place this year easily. But instead, the Parks and Recreation Commission went off in a different direction. And then they went out and applied for, in fact, what they were talking about all along was this, we could get a permanent structure for seven or eight hundred thousand dollars and we can get a grant for a half a million dollars. Well, you you see the numbers up there, looking for looking at, we're looking at now one point four three five thousand, uh, a million, four hundred and thirty five thousand, uh, even with all the grants in place. So, I mean, it just it went off. And the first sad thing there was uh if we had applied for that ADA grant, and that was an ADA grant, that wasn't a swimming pool grant, that was an ADA grant. If we had applied for it to cover the cost of a new bubble, that we would have had a new bubble in place almost totally paid for with that five hundred thousand dollar grant. But that that wasn't good enough. Instead, here's where we are, we, well, we got five hundred thousand dollars, but and we had another hundred thousand dollar donation, but we still, we're gonna have to dip into our reserves, one point four million. One of the questions we need to ask tonight and get the answer to, I hope, is taking that out of our reserves, what impacts that gonna have? Will we go out if we have to go out and get a loan for a public safety building? I mean, that's a that's a pending question. Here's another thing, we have uh a bid, a bid up there, a quote. We can, we can make the rec center ADA compliant for a hundred and twenty three thousand dollars. Now, if we should delay the cover for six months or a year or forever, but I'm not suggesting forever. If we should delay it, start until we get till we know where we're going with a public safety building. Do we have to delay the work to get the to make our rec center ADA compliant? I'm asking, no.
Oh, you, you, okay, yeah, so um we intentionally left the ADA work out of the bid package so that was viewed as a separate project. So that that separate project, um, it can proceed as is without approving the health bid. We would just have to get updated quote from Moss Marlowe or a another quote from from how to do that particular work. So that can be done under the grant and we can s- apply for reimbursement for that under the grant. And then that would leave the remaining money later on if if the project was to happen later on. But yes, the the ADA work can happen now, um, as long as we get a quote, you know, updated quote.
So regardless of what decisions are made tonight, we could move forward with that ADA work. Get that done and get reimbursed totally for it.
Yeah, so that that dollar amount falls under the formal bidding threshold, so we don't have to go out with formal bids like we did for this for the permanent structure portion. So that can just be a, you know, just like you're getting a roof on your house, you call a couple of contractors, get a quote and do the work.
So then somebody in a wheelchair could get into the gymnasium if we got that done?
Right.
Thank you, um, a little more history. I I referred to uh the best of my abilities. All the decision making that I knew all my life was was database decision making. I started last January asking, how many people use that pool in the wintertime? What does it cost to do it? The answer we got in January was we have six hundred and sixty average swimmers that utilize the space in the wintertime. Really? That was a preliminary meeting in uh about January and then it was repeated in all in in February fifth. Now, you're gonna have to put that other slide back up for us. We see sixty one, we know that sixty one residents use that. That's not sixty seventy, sixty average swimmers? We were told that twice in January and February. If there's anything that drives me up a wall, it's somebody giving me bad information. The cost data, which we saw on that last slide, we didn't get that until November. So here we are, we've been led down this path from, I mean, if we ran for council, we tried to do our homework. We were, we, last thing we could find and the last council accepted was that uh that pool cover is good for another ten years. That wasn't, that wasn't on our agenda to do anything about that, it just happened to collapse on election day. So we get credit for it and we're supposed to fix it and we could have fixed it for five hundred thousand dollars or less. But here we are, we're looking at one point four million. And we're looking at it, what, November, December, January, three months after we just unanimously said our highest priority is public safety building.
I would just say that we voted last month unanimously that we were gonna do this pool cover. I know the whole time that the public safety has been our highest priority. However, we have asked our Parks and Recreation commi- commission and the members were Gary Ogle, Donnie Edwards, Scott Compton, Chip Stallings, Nancy Tucker, Shannon Rataba and Justin Carswell. And I think in good faith, they have gone out and they have tried to find grant money to help raise money to defer the cost of this structure for our pool. They have worked hard, they have done the things that we have asked them to do. We know the whole time that they were doing this, that we were having issue, obviously, we've had issues for years with our public safety. So they're all going on at the same time. They didn't just all of a sudden, public safety happened and this not happened. So I think that we know the public safety are huge amounts. So it's obvious we're gonna have to borrow some money for public safety issues. And in fact, Mr. Harvey, you had talked about us borrowing from the USDA to fix our roads. You had said, let's borrow two million dollars from the USDA to fix our roads. And had Hurricane Helene not happened, we would have gone ahead and borrowed to fix our roads. And that would have been happening before the public safety building as well. So I think we need to look at what we have here. We have a bid, it will go up if we wait. And who knows if we keep waiting, will it ever happen? Will Valdez have twenty four, seven swimming, well, not twenty four, seven, but three sixty five year round swimming again? And I'm just not so sure that will ever happen.
One more question, what in what impact would taking one point four million dollars out of our reserves have on our ability to borrow, say, five million dollars to pay for a public safety building? Does that gonna have any influence on lending institutions?
Uh, I don't think it'll have uh an impact on lending, no.
You think what?
I don't think it'll have an impact on lending, no.
You don't?
And that's because we're a government entity and we're expected to raise our taxes to pay off debt if we can't pay it off. So again, I know I knocked on doors, thousands of doors. I know why I am sitting here today. It is because people were done with tax, being taxed so much. The reason that our county commissioner board changed, they were tired of being taxed so much. I am not raising taxes for every little thing that comes along and our our main focus still needs to be that public safety building. And then we can get to this. First of all, because the children are gonna want to swim this summer, if we wait six months, so the kids have If we wait six months, so the kids have a place to play this, let's all go back to that one and the splash pad, how about that? The reason everybody wanted the splash pad, you never tell the kids, they can't have something. No, we're gonna give the kids their swimming pool this summer, is how I feel. And then we can continue the building of a pool structure. But right now, I just don't see how we could skip over the biggest thing in our town for pleasure. I want to be safe. I want our police and firemen to know, we care about them, we want you working in our town. We are going to take care of you first and foremost, that's.
And I do too. I want us to be safe too. That is top-notch for me too. So I'm not saying that I'm against in any way, public safety. That is top for me too.
Well, we, we've got so many big-ticket items going on right now in the town of Valdez. Uh, and I'm really concerned about it. If you take one point four million dollars out of six point nine million dollars, that's gonna leave us five point seven million dollars in our fund balance, if I understand that correctly. Is that, is that pretty close, Bo?
Uh, yeah, that, that is, um, that's the late, that, the six point nine is our latest audit, so.
Right. So if we take one point four million out of that, that's gonna take us down to what, five point six, five point seven? Okay. Again, how is that going to affect whether or not we can get money to build a police and fire or a, a public safety building? I- is that going to affect us at all? That, that's, that's my big concern. You know, I see Mr. Compton here, Ms. Tucker, uh, Ms. Stevenson, uh, David, you know, and you, you guys know that I'm a hundred percent for the pool cover. However, I think we've got to look out for our total town. Uh, also, I, I, I talked with Bo earlier today, you can borrow money to build this pool cover. And I think if, if we borrowed money, our payment would be for a year, a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year. To, is that correct, Bo? You, you can, we could borrow money to do this without taking it from our reserve?
Right, it, so, but to put that in con- context, if.
Please do.
If, public, you know, we don't know how much public safety is gonna cost us, so.
That, that's, that's the total point.
Yeah, at, at some point, we'll have to borrow money for one thing or the other. So, the, the numbers I ran for you today were just an example of if we were to borrow money for the pool structure, how much that would cost over a twenty-year term. So, it was like, I think it was a hundred and twenty, or something like that, a year.
Yeah, one twenty-five, I think, is what.
Yeah, so that, that's, you know, it, 'cause you wanna maintain at least a fifty percent fund balance, that's six months of operating, um, reserves. Um, you know, you think about, uh, when Helene came through, our, our damage wasn't as, we had a million dollars in damage. Um, we, we were just thirty miles more into the storm. It could have been a lot more significant, 'cause it easily costs three million. So, that's why you wanna keep at least a fifty percent fund balance in the reserves. So when you start talking about all, you know, the public safety project, or project, things like that, uh, it's just good to keep your cash flows in mind. And, uh, so, it's, at some point, even though you've got the cash in the bank, the reserves, you know, fifty percent, still gotta borrow a little bit to keep that there, so that you incur a little bit of debt. You don't dry yourself out completely, if that makes sense. I hope that answered your question.
It, it does.
Okay.
Uh, but I, I am concerned about our fund balance. And where the one point four million dollars would do, would it be feasible to borrow this money? I don't know. I'm a, I'm a one hundred percent proponent for the cover over the pool. There is no question about that. How are we gonna pay for it? You know, and I think when the bids were open, I was, I was there the first time that Hout came, and then we didn't accept our bid, they rebid it, I had a doctor appointment the next time, and most of our recreation department was there. And I think all of us were astounded at the price, I was astounded at the price and the cost of what this is gonna cost us. I figured eight hundred, nine hundred thousand dollars, and it comes in at two million dollars. I just, uh, and our part's gonna be one point four million dollars.
Don't you think that will go higher if we wait?
Well, I, I think it could go down, or it could go up, I don't know.
Hi, hi.
We only had one company to bid, folks. After two, uh, we had two different bidding times, we had one company to bid.
I would like to return to the. Can I do that?
Everybody's awake now.
I would like to return to the public safety building. At the October seventh meeting, the council unanimously passed an ordinance that this would be our number one, our highest priority construction project. That's where we are. Now, one of the things that I do, and I spend a lot of time on it, I go back and I read the minutes. You know, how do we get here to this, to this? And I, I've got, uh, with, even before I got, we got, I got involved with the Facilities Review Committee, I got very interested in the history of the public safety building. And I've got one binder that's two inches thick with a whole bunch of information from twenty-two, twenty-eighteen, up till about twenty-twenty-one, and then another binder, about an inch, inch thick, that covers the last couple of years. And we really got off track with the public safety building back in August twenty-nineteen. The fire chief at that time came to the council, and he said, we've got a recommendation from a structural engineering firm. There's actually at least two recommendations, that for the safety of our police and fire personnel, I am asking you to approve a hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars to shore up that building, so they can be in it safely. And the discussion in that, go back and look at those twenty, August five, twenty nineteen minutes. I challenge everybody, go back and look at them. You'll find a councilman there, a councilperson, explaining, we don't wanna spend that money on temporary shoring. And we have the same councilperson now coming and telling the council, you need to spend two million dollars on a pool cover. Meanwhile, anybody who's been in business knows, if you hire a, 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 an engineering firm, and they recommend that you need to do something with this building to make it safe for employees, you do it. If you don't do it, you are opening yourself up to unlimited liability. And worse than that, we subjected our police and fire staff, those who reported to that building every day, to the danger of a building that had been judged unsafe. From, from that point, from August twenty-nineteen, I challenge, I request, I beg everybody, go back and look at the minutes, until July of twenty twenty-four. Finally, the then interim manager agreed. He got, he got a, he got a formal letter from an architectural firm saying, you need to evacuate those two buildings, relocate the police staff and the fire staff within thirty days. So, they are now safe. They may not be paid enough, I'm concerned about that too. But at least they're safe, but they're working in temporary facilities. The police department is in this building, fire department's in a rented trailer up behind the, uh, public safety building, which is costing the town fifteen hundred bucks a month, I think. And it will until we get a new fire station that they can move into. So, I mean, that's something that's gone on for six years. Disregard for the safety of our employees, and, and refusal to get it resolved. It's set, a plan set out here that, on Pineboro Avenue, that grew from six and a half million to, last estimate we had was gonna push us close to twelve million. And for about almost two years, the architect did nothing, and the town manager did nothing to make him, make it happen. And the town council did nothing to make the town manager, make this architect who's under contract do something. So, we unanimously fired the architect in, uh, December twenty twenty-three, and that canceled a seven point four million dollar USDA loan.
Mr. Harvey.
Which wasn't enough anyway. So, here we are, now, once more, we wanna put something else ahead of the public safety building. That's my concern.
Okay. You have anything else?
I'm, I'm good, I'm just hearing.
Counsel, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we defer this, that we table this item for six months. And if we table for six months, that will give us an opportunity to get responses back from our RFQ for the public safety facilities.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Those in favor of Mr. Harvey's motion signify.
May, excuse me, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Okay.
I wanna make sure that I understand the motion, asking Mr. Harvey.
Yes, I move that we simply postpone this item for six months. And the reason, since it was seconded, I think I can speak to it. The reason is that, six months from now, we'll have responses to the request for qualifications that's out there. And if that moves along according to the schedule we have, we should also have, uh, uh, proposals and estimates of what it's gonna cost to, uh, deal with the police department and, and the fire department. So we'll have, we'll have estimates of what it's gonna cost. And we may even have, at that point, six months from now, we may even have, be ready to accept, or act on, or consider contracts to renovate the Main Street building, or build a fire station on Massala Avenue, or build a combined building on Massala Avenue. So, I'm, I'm just suggesting, I'm, I'm, I'm not against a pool cover, I'm just saying, we've gotta put our needs and our wants in priorities. Our highest priority ought to be this public safety building, finally. Let's, let's postpone this for six months, and let's find out where we stand with public safety.
I like that idea, because there's a whole lot of kids who would be very disappointed this summer to not have anywhere. That is the only thing Valdez has for our kids, you've got the gym. Our rec department is phenomenal, I will always give them all the props. My kids play football, basketball, all the things there, I love them. But I do feel like we need to take things in order and make sure that we have the money we need. And this too, would open it up to where we can look at the loan in our budget process, make sure we're budgeting in the loan payment. So it all clicks together, it makes sense, um, and I think we owe it to the taxpayers.
But there's no way that I will not support building a pool cover. That will be done, that's got to be done. You know, if we delay it six months, I don't know how the recreation department will go with that. But I do want them to know that it will be done. And I think it's a financial thing we've gotta look at too, I really do.
Okay, anybody else? Everybody's aware of the motion that's on the table. Roll call vote, uh, those for the motion, uh, Councilman Ward will start with you, please raise your hand, state yes.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I'm, I like the things changed.
Oh, okay.
Okay, Ms. Emmerman?
No.
Yes.
Ms. Long?
Yes.
Ms. Long, okay, no.
Okay, motion carries three to two. Okay. All right, I don't, uh, Mr. Attorney, I don't see a need to address item I. Sorry, item H. Okay. Counsel moving to item I, mutual agreement approval of Lady Road Sidewalk Project, Mr. Wykel, sir.
So this is the sidewalk, I think we're all familiar, familiar with it by now, but I'll bring it up. So this is phase one. So, what we're talking about tonight is phase one of this project. There's a eighty-twenty map with federal funds, uh, two hundred and eighty-six, well over two eighty-six from town reserves, one point one four, uh, is the, uh, grant. So, phase one goes from Laurel to Crescent. Uh, if this project were to take place, it would require phase two, which I'll bring up now. And that, that would pick up from Crescent and then go to Lake Otis Drive. So that would be a phase two that we would apply for later on, if phase one was, uh, advanced. So between the two phases, um, I think the estimates for phase two were, I don't remember the total project cost, but it would be another five hundred thousand from town funds for that project.
Questions, counsel?
How long would it take to get phase two even looked at?
I think the application period opens up in spring, so it would probably be awarded, um, in that, that fall.
And you said we do have to front those costs, it would be.
Yeah, so it's a reimbursement grant.
Yes.
You think of Hoyt Creek, that grant is not, we got all of the money already, so we don't have, we don't have to front those cash flows. This is not like that, we would pay that one point one four, yeah, one point one four million upfront, and then request reimbursement, and then we're to their mercy how quickly they reimburse it.
Which is always fun with government, you never know when you're gonna get it. They get theirs, but you can't get yours.
This is another item that was, it had a torturous path between when we learned from COG that there's a thirty-day window coming up to apply for some funds, and where we ended up. And just to make sure everybody's clear on that, there's, this LAPP, L-A-P-P, funds that was available with three point five million. It was available to all the municipalities to apply for in the Greater Metropolitan Hickory Organization. And that is all the towns in, I think it's four counties. So, COG warned us, they warned everybody. You know, apply, you have thirty days to apply, but beware of two or three things. Everybody in this four-county area is gonna apply for this three, three point five million. And there's intensive project management involved, because it's federal-funded. And you gotta match twenty percent, so make sure you got that twenty percent available. So, I happened, I got appointed, I didn't know why, and it's been a little bit interesting, but I got appointed through the Transportation Advisory Committee of the Greater Hickory Metropolitan Organization. And so, that's where I learned about this. And I came back, and, and I, I talked, I scheduled a meeting with Intermanager Steen and Planning Director Johnson. I laid all this out, I said, look, we got an opportunity here. We got thirty days, we can apply for something. We need to be modest, because there's three point five million dollars available for the whole area. And, uh, things that would apply would be sidewalks, bicycle paths, updating traffic controls, uh, redoing the intersections. If you have an intersection, let's say you can redo one. So those are the kinds of things. And so I urged the planning director to, let's, let's consider, let's see what we can do. I heard nothing else until I got called to a meeting down at, near Lakeside Park, off, at the intersection of Lovely Road. That, what we were doing, instead, you know, whatever I recommended to the planning director was blown off. Instead, that became this grand plan, two-phase project, and we applied for three point six million dollars for it. More than was available to the whole four-county area. So when it came before the council, I mean, it was too late to change, because you had, the application was pretty intensive. So, yeah, I mean, I, I voted for it, because we're asking for three point six million, they only have six point five available. Why talk about changing? So, anyway, that's what, that's what happened. And then, we never heard, as a council, we never heard anything about it. what happened. And then, we never heard, as a council, we never heard anything about it, until just getting ready for this meeting. In, in fact, I thought it was the second phase from Crescent down to Lakeside that had been approved, but we didn't know any different until the last meeting. That got straightened out. So, that's why I brought out my old analogy of Pittsburgh's, Pittsburgh's Bridge to nowhere, this is a sidewalk to nowhere. Pittsburgh's Bridge to nowhere, across the elegant, halfway across the elegant, didn't get done for about fifteen years until more funding became available and they found a place to put the other end of it. I think this is probably a similar kind of situation. If, if we are gonna put a sidewalk three tenths of a mile down Lovely, I mean, it might be ten or fifteen years before we get a sidewalk from Lovely down, from Crescent down to the park. Meanwhile, we have kids who can't get to Magallior Falls, walking at, and that's part of our park. You can't get there, walking down, uh, was it Church Street, on a sidewalk. Uh, you have people going up and down Carolina Avenue, jogging, walking every day, they have a little sidewalk. Uh, what are we talking about? Throw in three hundred thousand dollars, all of a sudden, for three tenths of a mile down there, uh, a very thinly populated part of Love Lady Road. Uh, so, at any rate, uh, do, do we have a motion on this yet?
No, we're not that far along yet.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Mr. Wikele, are you finished, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Counsel, any further questions? What's your pleasure, counsel? Somebody speak. What's your pleasure, counsel, on this project?
I would just comment that, from what Mr. Harvey just said, you know, who knows when we'll get the other part of that, is that, well, if you get the fir-, if you would commit to the first part, and then you apply in a timely manner for phase two, in my mind, I'm thinking that would look, um, positive to the, this group, the, um, TAC, the, the group that administers this, the Greater Hickory Company. I mean, I just wanna make that point. I mean, it may not be a bridge to nowhere, because I think if you will show a commitment to it, that would impress them. Um, I think turning grant money away is not gonna be, from an optics perspective, for Valdez. You know, I think you'd do that kind of thing once, or even more than that, 'cause it sounds, sounds like at times, we're willing to give money back, I'll, you know, for different projects that we've talked about tonight. Um, I mean, people will stop thinking about wanting to give money to Valdez when we do have any kind of project. So, I think that's just part of the conversation as well.
Okay, thank you.
We have another, uh, example that's relevant to that. Uh, and let me see when this was. This was, uh...
Uh, Counselor Harvey, I'd asked for a motion, and so far, I've not received one. And it doesn't appear I'm gonna get one, so the item's dead. Okay, thank you, Bo. Moving on to item, actually, it's the interim manager's report.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a day, well, along with I, so it's no longer valid. Okay.
Yeah, I and J, you can scratch off.
All right, interim manager's report. So, I wanna start off by making a correction or something. I said it, I guess it was in the December meeting, I misspoke too soon. So, on July fourth, the Valdez pool will be open for business. Um, I had said the press date would be closed by fourth, but it is, it is open for business on July fourth. Okay?
Okay, thank you.
All right. Town offices are closed Monday, January twentieth, and observance of Martin Luther King Day. Old Colony Players production, Willie Wonka Jr., show dates are January twenty-third to February second.
But I'd like to put a plug for that. My grandson, Ethan, will be Willie Wonka. So, I'd love for all of y'all to come and see him.
Okay. So, that'll be on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday at seven thirty P.M., and Sunday is at two thirty P.M. Uh, you can go to oldcolonyplayers.com for, uh, tickets. The next council meeting will be Monday, January twenty-seventh, six P.M., and that will be for the agenda review. And then, we've got two public input meetings coming up for the Parks and Rec Comprehensive Plan. The first one will be Tuesday, January twenty-eighth, at eleven A.M. at the Splash Pad, and then also on February first, at ten A.M. at the Splash Pad. And then, our next regular council meeting is Monday, February third, at six P.M. here in council chambers. And then, on February eighth, we've got the Bluegrass at the Rock welcomes Joe Mullins and the Radio Ramblers at seven thirty on February eighth.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, your turn. Counsel comments. Anybody? Okay, hearing none, I'll make some. Uh, first of all, I'll thank our Public Works Department for the great job on our streets. Uh, awesome. I, I really appreciate all the work those guys do. Uh, next, I want a copy of the December fourteenth, twenty twenty-four paper, the A and E section. Valdez is on the front page. And I wanna thank the Rock School staff for all the events that they had, and the number of people that were brought into town through those. And I think the one I enjoyed most was the, uh, Hatley Memorial Tree Lighting Ceremony, and watching all those kids on the front steps of the Rock School sing. That was really awesome. Thank you. Okay, next thing. No, I ain't, I'm not done yet. Okay. I haven't got to say much. Uh, I've had several folks ask me about our town manager search. This is what I can tell you. I wish we were further along than what we are. We do not have a manager yet. We are in the process of searching for viable candidates. That's what I can tell you. If I tell you anymore, they're gonna put me in jail. Uh, counsel, I will remind you, be careful of what we do on our emails and texts, as far as conducting town business on those, uh, particular venues. Okay? Do you have a motion to go into a closed session?
I'm sorry, one quick thing, if I can. Um, we've talked a lot, uh, tonight about the Public Safety, um, staff and our firefighters and police, and I think last Thursday was Law Enforcement Appreciation Day, if I'm not mistaken. I think I saw that advertised. And I mean, I'm just, if this is the time to make that public comment, I would like just to acknowledge them, and I hope they got some, um, acknowledgement from the, um, their citizens, and we do appreciate everything that you do.
Yes, I, I, I can't toot y'all's horn enough for the job you do. Uh, okay, anybody else? Counsel, I'll take a motion to go into closed session.
Take a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, this closed session will be conducted under North County General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen point eleven A six, to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of appointment, or conditions of initial employment of an individual public officer or employee. I have a motion, a second, and I'll entertain all those in favor of going into closed session. Raise your right hand, say yes.
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 So be it. I'll tell you folks in the audience that no action will be taken during the closed session. If there's any action to be taken, we will come back out here and reconvene and take that action at that time. Thank you for being here.